Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming to the Milton Public Library today to hear our presentation. My name is Christine Hadland. I'm one of the library trustees and I'm also the chair of the Subcommittee on the Buildings and Grounds Committee. I also want to introduce Will, the library director, who's also going to be speaking tonight, and Cheryl Taguayis, the member of the Planning Board and the chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. And the guy over there standing is Jim Potter. He's our current chair of our board.
Come on.
Okay. I think I need this one. Okay, both of them. All right. I also want to just maybe have the few people wave that are library trustees that are here and members of MPIC that also helped to participate in this. So I know we have Susan Doyle. All right. So tonight, we're going to present to you the library's parking needs, and we're going to go through some of the options that we've explored to date for you. And then we'll open it up for public input. We would love your questions, comments, and any input that you might have. Also, just a reminder, there's a sign-up sheet over there. We would really appreciate it if you wouldn't mind putting your name and email there for us so we know who attended tonight. So, thank you. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Will.
Again, I'm Will Adamsik. I'm your library director. First, I want to welcome everybody who took the time to come out tonight to listen to our presentation and be part of our process. I also want to thank all of the different groups and individuals that we've talked to over the last many years, and Chris will get into that a little bit later on. I wanted to start by saying, and I apologize if some of you have heard this story before, but however many years ago now, when I was being interviewed to be the director of your library, one of the questions to me on that night was, "What are you going to do about the parking?", to which I said, "I found a spot. I don't really know what you're talking about." That was very out of context at that point for me, but parking was already on the radar because in Milton, you have such a successfully-used library since the renovations. It was already 10-plus years ago people were talking about parking. So my part of this presentation is to talk a little bit about needs and about why there is not enough space. And depending on the time of day you come by, there might be more spaces than other times, but when we have children's programming going on, we're full to the brim. We have people parking at Town Hall when there's not a fire station being built. We have people parking along Canton Avenue. We have people circling in the streets. And these are families of all ages with strollers and any number of kids. So that's one of our greatest needs, especially around children's programming. The other time is times like nighttime. We planned this event for a Thursday night. It's our quietest night at the library. But during the week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we have multiple events going on, whether it's library programming or outside groups using our spaces. And we experience that again similarly in the after-school time. There's a lot of times where people park, double-park, and are circling in and out of our space. So that's kind of a high-level picture of our needs. And just talking a little bit more about immediate needs versus future needs, we already need 20 to 25 more spaces just for children's programming alone. And this is from 10 to 12 most weekdays, you know, Monday through Wednesday. We have back-to-back programming. We can only use one space right now, but it's these weekday times, again, the after-school pickup, and then in the nighttime. 20 to 25 just gets us to what we already have demand for before we're even able to expand library services that would meet the demand that we're not meeting. So 20 to 25 more spaces could add about 200 more programs, especially children's programs, 30 kids in each program. That allows for another 600 people to use library programs. And I'll talk a little bit more about the numbers in a minute. And I should say that this entire presentation will be up on the library website, too, after this meeting. 50 to 60 spaces is what we're talking about future, right? We need, you know, 20 to 25 now. If we want to expand libraries' programming and services, we're going to need closer to 50 to 60 so we could have simultaneous use of spaces in the building, which we aren't allowed to do right now because of restriction on parking. Not restriction, but lack of parking. The current lot has 55 spaces plus three handicap spaces. Generally speaking, we have 12 to 15 daytime staff, four to five nighttime staff. An off-site parking solution would mean that staff could move further away and the public could use closer spaces. Also, again, I highlight those peak times: children's, after-school, evening programs. Looking more closely at the numbers, where these needs come from. We had over 800 programs during fiscal year '23. We're going to have closer to 900 during this fiscal year. We had over 17,000 people attend programs. And this is just a program attendance. It's not the people who are in here doing studying, using work from the library instead of work from home, just picking up their books, returning books. This is 17,000 people just attending programming. And you can see the breakdown. Children's programming is our biggest. And again, the age groups, people with young families, and then senior citizens who are using us, especially during the daytimes. So those are some big-picture numbers. So why expand? Room availability. I talked about programming. The other piece is room availability. We often cannot book two things at the same time. If we know we're going to have a big program in this room with 50 to 60 people, we are hesitant to book our smaller meeting rooms because there won't be parking for people at those. We can't do immediate back-to-back children's programming because we need people to leave so other spaces can come. These are some of the things. We turn away groups who want to use this space during the mornings for rental reasons because they wouldn't be able to park here because we have children's programming going on. So it's really, it's a space-needs issue here. When I talk about evenings, we often have Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, football, soccer. Those boards use our rooms on regular nights in addition to movies, programs, and concerts. So we have to turn people away, and we have to curb our own programming. Why do people want to come here? Well, generally speaking, it's a pretty good space to be in. We have good technology. We have IT infrastructure that people can use, projectors. We have smart screens. We have access to a kitchenette. We can accommodate eight to 100 people in our meeting rooms. And also, when you look around town, how many places can you have a public meeting at this point? There's less and less spaces. All the private clubs have all but closed up, so we are one of the few places in town that's accessible for people to come right now. During this whole process, I just want to talk about our goals. Our goal is, moving forward, when talking about parking, our safety. And we've done some things to improve safety in our parking lot, including, you know, changing the direction of the parking lot, putting a turnaround in. But safety for families so they don't have to cross Canton Ave. They don't have to get out of their car and load their kids on Canton Ave. That's a big piece. Capacity: we don't have the capacity in our parking lot to meet the capacity that wants to be in our building. I'll jump to green. We don't have EV charging stations right now. If we did, we'd have even less spaces because they take up more spaces than generally one regular space. And then growth. We're not allowed to grow our programming. We do try to fit more in in different ways and different times, but in order to make a significant growth, we need more space. And that growth would be offering multiple sessions of popular children's programming, offering simultaneous programs or simultaneous use of rooms for both our programs and people renting space. It would make rooms more available at all hours of the day in order to grow use of our library. So those are the big picture about why we have needs. We're busy. We're popular. We want to stay that way. We can't meet the needs of everybody who want to use, especially children's programs, where we have wait lists. We have people we turn away from using spaces because of parking. And that's how we've gotten where we are today. And I'll turn it over to Chris to continue that conversation.
So this is a little history, only a couple bullets, but 2015 was when the trustees actually began exploring options for some additional parking. We met with the town planner at that time and the town engineer to seek and sought out the planning department to help to support our efforts. COVID came, so we didn't really need parking at that time, so the lot was empty. So we took a little break, but restarted again our initiative in 2021. And at that time, we had a different town planner in the planning department suggested that we get MPIC involved because in their long-term plan, one of their goals is town center parking and looking at parking from a wider perspective than just what we were looking at, which was for the library. I'm just going to go through a little bit of the options that we explored in the early parts. So the first one that we looked at was to potentially look at providing some space just for the employees to be able to alleviate the existing parking. And again, we were working with the planning department at this time and looked up putting a parking area along the side of Reed'sdale here with maybe angular parking, which would provide possibly up to 12 spaces. We had town engineer do layouts. We had wetlands drawing. The Conservation Commission came in and looked at where this parking might be placed, and it was basically rejected and not allowed at that time. So we started looking at other places. And this would have been a short-term initiative. These aren't initiatives that would necessarily provide long-term parking that we're really looking to get. The next short-term option that we looked at, we've talked to the hospital multiple times, so met with Richard Fernandez, the president of the hospital, and Tony Chakello, who's the chair of the hospital board, to talk about, is there any options of using your parking, or can we share anything? So the first one that we looked at was, they currently, I don't know if you're aware of, have a shuttle that runs from St. Elizabeth's down to the hospital to provide parking for their employees. They have a lease with St. Elizabeth's for 50 parking spots. The shuttle runs mostly 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. That's when their bulk of their employees are coming in. So we looked at potentially using that. If we did look at that, that would be requiring them to, or us, to go back to St. Elizabeth's to see if we could get additional spaces there, which, at the time we talked to them, they weren't necessarily interested in doing that. And the timing, excuse me, the timing of the shuttle doesn't really match the library schedules of the employees that come to the library. The second one, we asked, "Do you have any land we can purchase?" You know, they have a lot of property over there. That was definitely something that they were not willing to entertain at all. They have future needs of their own, as you all know, and so that wasn't another option that we could look at. So we talked recently again about just utilizing their parking that they have currently. So there is some availability that we could use right now. It's only on Saturdays and Sundays, so there is available parking. It's about a half a mile from the hospital down here, so we could probably host an event and tell people they could park at the hospital, but they would have to be people that could walk up the hill and around the corner into the library. But that is an option, again, for probably a short-term, you know, maybe one-time event, but probably not for consistent programming. And they are also looking to expand their parking, so that's a plan that they have in place. They're looking to, I think they're looking still to go to the Board of Appeals shortly. And if that parking...
They start the hearings next Thursday.
They start?
The hearings with the Board of Appeals next Thursday.
Oh, okay, next Thursday. There you go, from the Board of Appeals member. And they're expecting that that parking might come online sometime in the spring of next year. And if that happened at that time, they would be willing to be able to let us do some parking in that area down there again, but not until after 3:00 or 4:00, which is when most of their employees would leave. So again, it might give us some options for some of our events, but not a long-term solution. The next neighbors, I'm going to call most of these are neighbor options because we'd like to get the parking nearby here, is the two churches that are located across the street on Canton Ave. So the first one, First Parish, I met and spoke with Lisa Ward, the Reverend of First Parish, and explained to them, to her, our situation. They do have some parking availability, and they were very willing to let us utilize it. However, whenever we wanted to use it, we would have to call ahead and make sure was the parking available because they have funerals and different things that aren't, you know, scheduled every day, but that come up. So there is a possibility to share some parking. They have 19 spaces in total, so it doesn't solve a lot of our problem. We couldn't add a program for that, but we may be able to use it for some purposes. And the dates here are the availabilities that we could possibly use it. So it would only be in the afternoons during the week, Saturday afternoon and Sunday after So just as I said, it's difficult for us to add any additional really weekly programs with this kind of an effort to try to coordinate. And it really doesn't meet the needs of our concerns of crossing Canton Avenue for the I also met with Reverend R.G. Wilson Lyons. He's the Reverend at First Cong across the street here. They have more parking at that site. They have 26. There's two handicap sites and 24 regular. Unfortunately, the availability for their parking is very limited. They have a lease with Bright Horizons, and that parking is not available for anyone's use between the hours of 7:30 and 5:30 every day, five days a week. So although people probably park there and use it, we could never plan a program and tell people to go over there and park. They can't tell their own patrons that, or members of the church that. But there is some availability on Saturday all day if maybe we wanted to do a special event. Again, it would give us 26 spots over at that location. And Sunday after 4:00, and then on one of the evenings, there is 12 spaces, not the full amount that they have in total. So again, it just, it doesn't really allow us ease to be able to add programs on a regular basis. It requires to inform the patrons, like, "Where are you going to park? Okay, we're having an event. If you can drive over here, and then you can drive over there, and then you can drive over there, and maybe you'll find a place to park before the event starts." And it, again, does not really meet the safety concerns that we have crossing Canton Avenue. One of the longer-term options that we explored, and this was explored really only just by the trustees initially, was, well, let's put a parking garage right next door here. We have some parking here, and maybe we could put a garage in here. So again, it was the trustees themselves talking. We didn't, at that time, engage anyone. But when we looked at that, we could only go up or down. So I think most of you here are familiar. There's a huge retaining wall in the back of the parking lot, which was built up just because, just to put the parking that exists there today. We wouldn't know if that retaining wall would be able to support another two levels, possibly. We currently have 58 spots in there. We would like to add some EV stations. And if you're going to add ramps and turnarounds, I don't know. Cheryl and some of the other people could give more specifics, but you're probably talking less than 40 spots on each level, and we'd probably need three levels. So I don't know what you all think about having a two-car, or two-floor, or possibly three-floor garage next to this beautiful historic building that we all in the town invested to make it look as well as it does. So for several reasons, the trustees at that time didn't really think to pursue this option either. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Cheryl, who's going to provide a little more information on the garage, and also kind of go through some of the other options that we've been pursuing with MPIC.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Will. I see that since Chris did the introductions, several of my fellow MPIC committee members are here. If any of you want to raise your hands, that's what Chris asked earlier. So thank you all for coming, and thank you all in the audience for coming. So the master plan was developed 10 years ago, and one of the recommendations in the plan was to further study town center and also to work with the library on solving their parking needs. So 10 years later, it wasn't quite 10 when we started working on this. When we did start working on it was when the Fire Station Building Committee was planning the new fire station, or the expansion of the fire station. And we asked them to come to us to present their plans and to consider the other users in town center so that the planning for the fire station would not preclude some other uses or some other opportunities in town center. So we asked them how they derived or came up with the parking that they were going to provide with the new fire station, and they said that they were replacing the parking that they were removing for the expansion, but they hadn't done any further evaluation of whether that was sufficient for the users of town center. So MPIC engaged with a consultant, Metropolitan Area Planning Council. The Planning Board works with this consultant regularly. We have a committee member, MPIC committee member, who serves as Milton's representative to MAPC, and they do a lot of good planning work for us. So here in 2020, we had a couple of community forums. Maybe some of you were there. We engaged with youth who use this area as well because the high school and the middle school students are great users of the library, particularly after school. And we talked about what opportunities there might be at town center, whether additional parking might be a possibility. It was identified, then, too, that crossing Canton Avenue is a challenge. It's a concern for safety, that because of the slope or the rise, that there's really few locations that a crosswalk might be put in. But it was identified there, you can see in the middle across Canton Avenue, that that might be an appropriate location. At this time, our consultant came up with a few spaces that could be added. You can see them in the green, and I'm sorry that the numbers are kind of faint, but it's 13 spaces total. Five along Engine Road and another eight next to the four that are on the side of Town Hall. They also identified if, well, they do show a parking lot on Reed'sdale here, but we further learned through the Conservation Officer and the Conservation Commission and the Wetlands mapping that that's not a viable location. And then they also identify on Canton Avenue the potential, if there's another municipal use where the letter A is, that that might be an appropriate location for it. And then also in 2020, the planning department started to take a closer look at the utilization, and they did some questionnaire amongst the users. And they also had reached out to the churches at that time. I didn't include the churches here. I just focused on the Town Hall resources. So you can see at Town Hall, there's a total of 86 spaces, parking spaces. And I call restricted in two categories: handicap, so there's six, and then the fire department, because the new parking spaces behind the fire station are dedicated only to the fire department. So that leaves a total of unrestricted spaces of 67. And in 2020, the assistant town planner, in talking with the staff at Town Hall, identified that there were 46 employees who drove and needed a parking space, and there were another 12 town vehicles that were using parking spaces, for a total of 58. So 58 out of the 67 were committed to. That left nine spaces for visitors. And it was also identified in the research with the departments that overall, Town Hall received about 100 visitors a day, spread throughout the day. And in the evening, about the same number attended meetings. So we looked at this and didn't see a lot of opportunity for additional parking within the confines without perhaps looking at green space loss, tree loss, and monument relocation, which didn't seem, again, kind of an appropriate way to approach it. In 2023, we took a little, we worked with the library and took some of what the utilization that Will spoke about. Planning Department staff also went out and did counts of the parking spaces and came up with very similar things that Will shared in terms of when the peak demand was and how full the parking spaces were at those times, and I won't repeat those. But they also took a look at the curbside parking on Canton Avenue, which is on the same side as the library. What they found was those spaces were not fully utilized. And in part, we identified what we thought were some of the reasons why. In terms of staffing, those spaces aren't available until 9:00 a.m., and staff reports to the library before 9:00 a.m. There were also safety concerns for the peak users of the library, being the young families, if you're taking children out of a car seat and you have a door open into open traffic, or if you have an elder you're helping out who has a cane or a walker. So there's, those were some of the reasons it was thought that those spaces are probably not fully utilized. And some of them are downslope closer to the Thatcher and Highland intersection. So there's talk about whether adding parking spaces here. And I had said at a recent MPIC meeting that I would talk with a consultant. By day, I'm an architect. My firm has designed parking structures. We design parking within other use structures, mixed-use structures as well, and we work with parking experts. And I spoke to them about this and how this might work. The challenge is that, you know, there's feasibility challenges with adding it here on top of aesthetic and other challenges, and as well as safety challenges. The feasibility has to do just with dimensions of parking. They're very fixed. You have a certain kind of slope that you can't exceed if you're going to park on that slope. And you need 200 feet to go down one level in length. You can see what 200 feet in length looks like next to the library, and you can see it extends into much closer to Canton Avenue. The other thing that's a challenge is that you have existing infrastructure underneath the existing parking. All of the stormwater containment systems from the building and from the parking lots are there, and they would have to be relocated someplace else. You have a loss of trees, a loss of rain gardens, and the loss of some of the aesthetic character. And the garage would be very close to the entrance to the building. And these are just diagrams to give an idea of the dimensional restrictions. And these are just diagrams to give an idea of the dimensional restrictions. This would be three levels, one sloping down and two flat. They don't connect, so there's dead ends. So, if you get to the end and you can't find a parking space, you have to figure out how to turn around. And I just show these because I'm showing the technical, it's, the consultant said to me, it's not feasible really to do this because of these kinds of considerations. So, obviously, a dead end is a safety consideration as well. So, I'm going to move on from that one now to this. So, we spent some time looking at that parcel A that was identified on the MAPC plan. And this property is under the control of the Select Board. It's next to the police station, and there's wetlands in between the police station and here. We looked at if you used a small enough footprint and took advantage of the topography, you could have two levels instead of one, and you wouldn't need an internal ramp because you could use the slope of the land to get you to the two levels. They don't connect in this scenario either. But this is a way that you can have parking with the smallest footprint as possible and the least impact on the existing natural landscape. So, we can accommodate 60 vehicles here on two levels, but we could also consider, which is one of the things that the master plan had suggested, whether you combine parking with another use. So, parking, so that is not just a lot, a surface lot, but could have a use either on that lot or above it. So, that could be something such as a café. It could be other municipal use, such as a teen center, meeting space, or offices, or it could also include affordable housing. So, how many parking spaces could be dedicated to the library or to public use, and how many to these other uses would still need to be studied? The yellow here is where a crosswalk is actually being planned. We, an engineer had taken a look at it. Our town engineer and DPW took a look at it, and they are going to install a crosswalk with lights that are activated by the pedestrian at this location. Some of the due diligence that the committee and the library engaged consultants to help us with include, I mentioned, the crosswalk, the wetlands that Chris mentioned, also a report about this site that the planning department engaged an engineer to perform. We had the land surveyed by a land surveyor. We had an engineer look at the layouts, and we had a professional cost estimator develop cost estimates for parking and other uses. You can see that for a parking-only use, the estimate at a public bid type of project would be $5 million, which equates to a little over $83,000 a space. I just want to address a little bit the aesthetics of parking. A lot of people think parking, and they think it's going to be unattractive. Parking doesn't have to be unattractive. It can be designed to fit into the natural environment. It can have screening and materials and nice landscaping, and this is, these are just a few images to give an idea about how that could work. If you integrate it with another use, again, they don't have to be barren parking structures like most of us are used to parking in, but they can incorporate these same types of materials that would fit into the context of the library's architecture, especially the new architecture, and also the natural environment of the site. So, with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Chris.
So, as you can see, we are looking to continue to collaborate with MPEC on a solution for the library. We had a meeting with the Select Board in March and presented a version of this presentation here that you see, and they unanimously supported us continuing to work on a potential use with the town-owned option, because the town, the town of Milton owns that property over there. So, that's what we are looking to do. We have reached out to all of our immediate neighbors, in addition to those that we provided here. We've also spoken to the police chief, who was very excited that there might be more parking and would be supportive as well of this option. I've also spoken to Brian Walsh, who was the chair of the fire department, and there may be needs there, although they have their restricted parking available for firefighters, but the building next door will be part of the town. So, the town, if they're going to look for new uses for that property, are going to need more parking to be able to support those new uses. So, and we also, just so you know, the only other neighbor that we have is the house next door, which was moved in order to build the existing addition to the library or whatever. We did send them an invite in the mail to this forum, just so that they know. Nobody knows them personally, but we just wanted to make them aware of it, so they would have an opportunity as well to come and speak, whether it's tonight or any other time. So, I just want to let you know, tonight is our first open forum. Hopefully, this isn't the last communication that we have with our patrons or our neighbors or whatever on a parking solution, and we would just like to open it up for comment. So, Jim has a microphone here. We don't have too many people here, but if you could keep your remarks, maybe just three minutes, at least so if everyone gets a chance to speak, and then I'm sure you can speak again at the end of that. So, that would be helpful. So, thank you. So, does anybody want to speak? So, Liz?
Hi, I'm Liz Dillon. So, should I stand this way? Okay, I'll stand this way. Hello. So, I use the library a lot with my two children, who are three and a half and also six. And there are a lot of times where we come and we are not able to find parking. So, I think it's really great that you're working on that. My question really concerns sort of this mixed use of the parking structure. So, if this is town-owned property, would that be leased to a café, for example? Would you make money off of that somehow? Is that money that we could then fund back into paying for this $5 million? And where is that money coming from?
Thanks. So, that question is something that we've briefly discussed at the MPEC meetings. One idea that we had was to issue a sort of a request for expression of interest, to see what the private sector might find interesting, if they would find it interesting to do a public-private partnership. Those are being done. In fact, they're being done a lot with affordable housing in many places. In fact, Boston, Chicago, Wisconsin, many places, apparently because the funding for affordable housing allows you to incorporate the infrastructure of parking into your funding sources, for example, low-income housing tax credits. So, that we have some pretty good examples that it works on affordable housing. On the café side, you know, that's a question then whether the town wants to become a landlord and lease it out, but there could be definitely rental income. You know, we have, I have had some conversations with a couple of local proprietors about what rental income could be and what kind of needs might be for something like this here. And so, somewhat further investigation needs to be done on that. But I think in terms of Milton hasn't really pursued these kind of public-private partnerships, and maybe this is a good time to explore it and see if it would make sense here.
Okay, I'll see you.
Suzie Doyle, Library trustee. Aren't we trying to get 100 to 120 parking spaces? And if we are, looking into the future, not right now, but into the future, that's what we're going to need. Would any of that café housing take away from the possibility of getting that 100 to 125 slots? Because we don't want to be here 10 more years, coming back to the same scenario.
I think it becomes a question of whether that's a desired use, what the parking requirements could be, and whether they could coexist. It's an analysis that would need to be done to answer that question.
My name is Paul Lovin. The question I have is about the parking space size. Is that standard? Is that like, what I've noticed in this parking lot, sometimes if there's an SUV or a large vehicle, there's not really room for two vehicles. So, it may be counted as two spaces, but it doesn't fit two vehicles.
Well, the zoning has a requirement for parking space size. I don't know what the dimensions are here at the library. I did notice that they're narrow. Our zoning requirement is nine feet width by 19 feet in depth. Again, I'm not sure what's here. Sometimes there's an effort to make them smaller, to get more spaces in, but people are not, in some places, they might seek to get a change or variance to allow, you know, and a municipal facility doesn't necessarily have to follow the zoning. So, I'm not sure what's here.
I'm also a mom, like, three kids under five. I've actually never had a problem finding parking when I come to the library with my kids, maybe because we don't always come to the children's programming specifically. Anecdotally, I actually love, we had a more robust children's library section, first parking, but that's another topic. I am curious how many spots we have along Canton Avenue, because I know those feel like they're underutilized. I have a second question.
There's 24.
So, I think, it seems to me like the crosswalk going in, and I will park in Town Hall if I ever need a spot. I'm comfortable crossing the road with my kids. I'm comfortable getting out on Canton Avenue, so that's just anecdotal, mother. I don't love the idea of cutting down a forested area with a historic structure on it to put up only 50 or 60 parking spots.
I will mention, Chris can speak to the trees. She's spoken to someone about that. On the powder house, this is set back behind the powder house, so just in terms of the diagram, but the location exactly is still flexible. So, it would not require the demolition of the powder house. And do you want to, Chris, do you want to speak to the trees?
So, I'm going to read you a few comments. So, we did a walkthrough of the potential area, which, again, as Cheryl said, it's just a potential, there's no definite drawings or designs at this point, but I walked through the property over there with Pete Jackson, who I think many of you know. He was on the planning board. He's a landscape architect. He's very familiar with trees. He had a lot of things to say about the land swap and the trees over there, and knows trees and understands the value of trees. So, I'm going to read you his comments, if you don't mind, just so I don't misstate him. But, "As a landscape architect, I was asked to review the proposed site for a parking structure in support of the library and other Town Center uses. There was an interest in identifying significant trees or other environmental resources that could be impacted by the construction as currently proposed. The site slopes moderately from the street elevation toward the police station. It is town-owned, I believe, under the jurisdiction of the Select Board. This topography will be conducive to constructing a parking level below street elevation. The site currently contains a mixed forest of predominantly maple, oak, and black cherry trees with limited understory plants or ground covers. The majority of the trees are a few varieties of maple, only one of significant size, and it is in very poor condition. The best trees on the site are about a half dozen quality red oak, varying from 16 to 20 feet. Since many trees of significantly greater size are common in town, it is my opinion that removal for the intended purpose is a reasonable action. I would note that it may be possible to save one or two of the better oaks with some flexibility in the exact sighting of the parking facility." So, although some of the oak trees would need to be cut down for this, he feels that in his mind, it's, there aren't precious trees over there. I mean, certainly to us, every tree is precious, but we also have a precious need here that we're looking for, so.
Carla? I think Carla was.
Trustee of the library, sorry. Did we speak about the arborist, like, a tree, the oak trees? Should we cut them?
I'm sorry, what?
The arborist?
An arborist.
We haven't yet. Hi, essence, we just asked Pete just to get a quick opinion. Again, we haven't, if we went forward with this plan, we would get an arborist, we would get a lot more work done on any of the details that would go forward. So, this is just an initial reaction to somebody who's pretty familiar with trees and things.
Okay, because as a tree person, I hate to see trees go, you know, without, I'm a historical person, and I like to see trees stay in place.
I'm going to loop back to something you talked about early on, about the events that don't happen, or even how many of the town events here at the library. I really have been impressed by all the work you put into this, and I want to start by just commending the people who worked on this, on this presentation. It's really impressive. And part of what impressed me was, I don't think a lot about the meetings that don't happen. I often think about, how can I avoid meetings? But in fact, what I know is, this is a good-sized town with a lot of adults and a lot of issues, and there aren't a lot of meeting spaces. And actually, if the library can't meet all the needs for meetings, political candidates, candidates' forums, what are the other alternatives? I mean, Town Hall, same issues of parking. They have a good-sized meeting space. But as was pointed out, there's no women's club anymore. There's no music club anymore. The kind of spaces that used to be available for evening meetings aren't available anymore. And I was, aside from Cunningham Hall, is there any other space?
Church.
But non-denominational space? No.
Restaurants.
Yeah, so I mean, really, it's a evening.
The art center has some space.
But in essence, if you want to hold an evening meeting, there aren't a lot of alternatives, and I haven't gone through, and I wondered if I was missing anything, or that you and part of your inventory were thinking, oh, but we could just easily try to rent this space and get everybody in it five nights a week and not have another library.
I'm not sure I can answer that question. For the whole town, another space that's probably available.
Sometimes, is the council on aging? I don't know how much room they have for meeting space other than their own program use, and there may be.
Is the old station, that the plan, maybe available?
Correct. That's the one of the one that I said. So, the old building at the fire station, the one across the street, my understanding is it'll be available for, I don't know exactly what, you know, maybe Roxanne or someone else can speak to that, but I think it is going to be looking at for possible municipal meetings. I don't know if it would be for outside groups to rent, like we current.
It's not ADA acceptable.
It's not ADA acceptable, Regina is saying, so, okay. So, I don't know if you know anything else, maybe you can.
My understanding from conversations with the Fire Station Building Committee is that space is for fire department training first, and they also plan to do outside training, I mean, bringing in firefighters from other communities. And then, when they're not using the space, it could be available for other use. But I don't know how many, what the capacity of the room is. We've been trying, we're trying to get that information.
Thank you very much. Wonderful job.
Quick question, Joe Medunio, Phil's Parkway. Has Loder, have you had any agreements in the past or even presently with the congregational or humanitarian church to use some of their parking space?
Maybe he missed that.
Or anything like this? I know this, a lot of these spaces.
So, I don't know if, Joe, you said if you missed the earlier part, but we did meet, you know, I met with First Parish with Reverend Lisa Ward, and I also met with Reverend RG Wilson Lyons of First Con. And in the presentation that you can look at online, we provided their availability to give us parking. So, one of them has 26 spaces, one has 19. Some of them are used on different nights, weekends, during the day, so we have spoken to them. And this is their, I mean, they read this and made sure that I didn't want to misstate what they had provided to us, so.
So, those would be used still, even in the garage? I mean, those spaces are available now, or will be?
Those, these spaces are available right now. If we wanted to have some short-term parking and have some people go across the street to get, you know, 19 spots at First Parish, we would need to arrange for the day and time with them, and then we could, we could use the spots, so. Yeah, they're very willing to help out, you know, yep. Yeah, they're very willing to help out, you know, yep.
I'll say, it's not a solution to any of the children's programming, because it's after, it's afternoon time during the week, that's it.
Hi, I'm Darryl Warner. I just want to second what Carla said about, I'm very impressed with what you guys have done, I really am. Sounds like you've talked to a lot of people, and I think that's really awesome. Thank you, thank you very much, and it's a lot of work, and it's important work that we're doing. I look at parking personally as like a 20th century problem, and we are now in the 21st century, so as much as, and it's a good thing that we have so much interest in coming to the library. It's an amazing space. Maybe we all have to change how we think about things, because we do, we have to think about a lot of life a lot differently than we think about now. And parking in and of itself is, it's a dead horse, basically. We have tried to get, 100 years ago, they were trying to do stables, and they're going to pick up manure off roads, and pitching posts and things, but look where we are now. So life is going to change like this changing. So maybe there's a way that we can do something, you know, where we're not all driving cars. I mean, I know Becky and I lived on Martin Road, so easily we can walk. We walked here tonight, saved a space for someone else who needed to drive, and we walk up here with our grandkids all the time, try to walk around as much as possible. We do drive electric cars, and we do have solar, so we're not, we're getting away from the fossil fuel thing, and we all have to kind of think about how to do that, and not just build more parking lots. And any parking structure today, in my opinion, should be triple purpose, quadruple purpose, and that's to power vehicles, charge vehicles, be two-way charging vehicles, both the grid, help support, you know, the grid that's going to need a lot of support, we're going to need a lot, lot more, and we're going to be back here in another five years if we don't start thinking about it more seriously right now. So I don't, I can't say I have a solution, other than in the short term, maybe meeting spaces or somewhere else, and this is a more cultural thing, that happens at the library, which we can't necessarily get in other spaces. I don't know, thinking about the programming a little differently, thinking about parking at the high school, at Pierce or wherever, and have electric vans bringing people. When you're going to have an event, you know, you can drive things around, and putting solar and stuff into those spaces that can help them and help this process go forward here. You know, it's, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of work, but parking in and of itself, like I said, in my opinion, is a dead horse, and we should try to think of it in a different way. Thank you.
I really liked what that, I really liked what you had to say, it kind of inspired me, so I'm going to, I'm going to continue that train of thought, though I don't know. My name is Cheryl Stoffer, and I'm a member of the state, a company member of the State Tree Advisory Committee. We had gone through a period of about 10 years in this town, actually, possibly 20, where we took out tree, street trees, but we didn't replant them, because we thought this was a way to save money. And as a result, we have a real deficit in the number of street trees in this town, and the charge of our committee, which has been raising funds, have raised almost $100,000 to plant new trees for the last anniversary. But studying this over a decade, I realized that the most important thing is not to plant new trees that are small, and that we have trouble watering during the summer drought, we don't have the manpower to water these, like, these trees. Some of them die, a lot of them die, but it's more important to save existing trees, because they have big root systems, they're mature, and when we have all these 100-year floods and these 100-year droughts that are going to come rolling in, it's the mature trees, not the baby trees, that are going to have the best chance of survival. And those trees are keys to our survival, and more especially, to the survival of these children, who are talking about serving with library programs. In the long run, the survival of a large oak tree might be more important to that child than attending a library program. I think that we're just beginning to realize how dire our situation is, and that the old way of thinking, which is build more roads, build more parking lots, drive more cars, drop them off at the curb, is taking us to disaster. And I would love to see this $5 million for a parking garage is somehow used to improve mass transit, so that people could take mass transit to this library more easily. I think that libraries are, should be, to a degree that they are a center of the community, they should have great mass transit access. So I would like to see, one, an analysis of, if we took the same amount of money, how could we use it for mass transit to benefit attendance of this programming? And I don't know what the current mass transit situation is. Two, could we be putting some of these programs out into the community, like the Arts Center in Milton Square? Three, well, I, one thing that kind of made, took me slightly back at my heels, was when the architect who toured this site along Canton Ave., which is a scenic road across from the Town Hall, said that there were a number of mature oaks, but there are plenty of other oaks in town. And I thought, well, what is the criteria here? That if it was a rare southern magnolia, and it was the only one in town, that we wouldn't cut it down? But because it is only an oak tree, which is these single most valuable trees that we have in this town to combat global warming, and to, to support the biosphere. A single oak tree will, will produce caterpillars, will produce 300 different types of caterpillars for feeding baby birds, and our bird population is half of what it was when I first moved to this town 45 years ago. So maybe, even though we already have some oaks elsewhere, we should keep these oaks too? And I, I'm sorry, and then I'm sure I had some other thoughts, but that's why I have to say that. Oh, yes, here's the other thought. There is a scenic road bylaw where we are telling developers, and they cannot clearcut or even cut trees that have radius in three inches diameter. Along scenic roads, which there are, I don't know, 30, 36, and this is, Canton Ave. is one of them, and we, and they are always trying to fix this now, and they're like, you know about the scenic bylaw? And we're saying, well, you have to be careful. How do we enforce that if we're clearcutting or cutting down trees along a scenic byway for our own convenience? Anyway, thank you.
Should I, or should I just let it go?
Thank you, and I support what everyone has been saying. You know, I think we are at a pivotal, pivotal time, you know, right now, where we continue to, like, preserving our open spaces, because they are rapidly disappearing. As we've seen photographs online, social media, with the clearcutting of the most recent 40B, we are losing our tree canopy very rapidly, and our State Tree Committee is amazing, and they are trying to plant these street trees. But when we, as a town, are taking conservation land by eminent domain with plans to develop, if we are planning to clearcut, it's not only, it's a scenic roadway, this is a national historic district, very historic district, with old beautiful churches. I think of the gazebo, I think of the children sitting out at the band concerts, and they have the beautiful trees to look at. Clearcutting a woodlot in, on a scenic roadway in a historic district, I can't think of anything more, just in opposition to what our master plan is in favor of. And I, and I support, and I thank you all for all the work that you have done on this. I support the library, my husband's on the Library Building Committee, and helped to see this beautiful library built. But I think that we need to look at this in a way that we, that we think of the way we can bring programs to the community. There was somebody who actually could not be here this evening, and I just had some excellent comments, and I just want to share those. "I will not be able to attend the library meeting this evening, but some food for thought. Think about the town center as a district with shared uses. Connections across Canton Ave. are key. Time to take our roads back to serve the residents. The town green could be slightly modified to add parking along the sides, which might add 15 spaces. What about employee parking at Town Hall, and they walk to the library? Library-sponsored events off-site, offsites, and actually bring the programming out to the neighborhoods to boost participation. Count parking spaces in the town center district and allocate them across all buildings as a single resource. We should be focused on resisting, on reusing, the reuse of the chemical, possibly the chemical building could be used for a different, a general, a small general store or a coffee shop, and not removing old growth landscaping for concrete parking structures. I think that bringing, bringing more concrete and asphalt and clearcutting trees is not the way to move forward in our town. Thank you."
I just want to make one comment, thanks for your comments, Meredith. We've asked the fire chief to weigh in on, that's a fire access roadway, there's, when the fire department gets a call, they blast out of that station. Safety is a concern, to have parking, people coming, backing out into that fire lane, so we're, we're trying to get that from the fire chief, before we would make a recommendation to add parking that would be in that area. And then I, I think Will would like to talk about, a little bit about the programming.
Hi, thanks. I just, yeah, I just want to address the offsite programming briefly. I'll say this, we do offsite programming every week, every month, on a pretty regular basis already, and we have a fairly good balance. It's a challenge for us to do offsite programming, because we're a very small library department, there's 20 employees at the library. We're open six or seven days a week until 9:00 most of those days, so when we go offsite, it leaves us short-staffed often here. But, that being said, I was, I was at Fuller Village this Monday, I was at the Council on Aging last week, and our children's programming does go offsite, especially to preschools, schools, and we'll be starting up visiting the farmer's market again anytime now. I know I'm going to be there the last Thursday in June, if you want to come and hang out with me that day. But we do, we look into offsite programming, it is something that we're committed to doing, and we just try to make it balanced as best we can with the staffing needs of a very busy public building, so.
Hi, I'm Kathleen O'Donnell, and I'm on the board for the Friends, or the Shop Next Door. We run the programming, provide the financing for the programs that are run here at the library. And I do have to say that the parking issue is very serious here, and the fact that there's been lots of suggestions that we could be doing these programs other places, we are investing a fair amount of money into the library itself, into the children's room, and the Children's Activity Center. The idea that we would want to take people out of this fabulous building and put them someplace else is really not what we're all about. We really want people here, we want the energy here, we want the participation here. We want people to be here and enjoy this library that this town has spent a lot of money. And so I know that there's lots of concern about the trees and the clearcutting, but this is just a preliminary study. We're only sort of looking at what the options are. And I would encourage the people who think that would be a terrible idea to come up with a solution, because I think that the master plan and the trustees have looked at lots of places already, and have tried to do the best they can to find the most amount of spaces. And so if you folks have other ideas and some other proposals that you think would be providing the number of spaces that we need here, remembering, of course, as somebody pointed out, that there's no mass transit here, there's no bus that you can take here. The only way people can get here is walk, bike, or drive. Obviously, things may be changing in a while, but right now, we have a growing school population, we have lots of kids here in town, and they're here all the time with their parents, and we really need to make sure that those kids and those parents can safely bring those kids to these fabulous programs. So if people have other ideas here that would like to suggest to the Master Plan Implementation Committee to look at, to say, oh, we hadn't thought of X, Y, and Z, I'm sure that they'd be loving that kind of input, and appreciate that.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Has Reedstown Avenue been considered along the right side? Can you say anything about that? I may have missed it, I'm sorry.
You missed it, yes. It was rejected.
Conservation.
Oh, really?
It's wetlands, very close to.
On the right, on the.
Over here on the side. Where number 12 is, right there, the number 12.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
That would be 12 spaces.
The land you're talking about for this is not conservation.
Well, the, right, so you see the, the. Yeah, this is generated by the Conservation Officer for the Town of Milton, Steve Ives. And so the blue line that kind of comes towards Hillside Arena, why is it labeled Hillside? It's Highland. The, there's a stream, so there is a 25-foot buffer and 100-foot buffer, so what was shown in the diagram is outside of the 25-foot do-not-disturb line, but some of it is within the 100-foot. But this is all within restricted area. So the library itself, the plans from when it was expanded were provided to me by Will, and I looked at the civil plans, civil engineering plans, and they show that the parking and the library infrastructure, which is on the, this side on that plan, next to the library, so the transformer for the electrical service, et cetera, that's all as close as it can be to the 25-foot new do-not-disturb line. So there's really no space, yeah, and it's also slopes quite a bit, and there's nice trees there.
Could we take a lane from Reedstown? They did it on the arborum, right? In the, for special events?
I think it's a state.
It's a state road.
State road, yeah.
So Joe, to answer your question, I'm probably one of the few lifeline residents here, and growing up, the children's library had access.
Yeah.
This side, along Reedstown Road, that they would park on, and there was a small parking lot that had access back here. So there was at one time.
Before the expansion.
Parking along Reedstown.
Before the expansion.
So I just had a couple of questions, a couple of comments. So my question is, what is the library and Town Hall doing to encourage their employees to take the bus or to ride their bikes? I know that there's a lot of talk, you know, in the planners, that that's what they're saying, is the future, as Darrell mentioned, or the bus and bikes, so I'm kind of wondering what our town staff is doing. Also, just a couple of random. Also, just a couple of random comments. As a tree person, it's my opinion that many smaller insignificant trees can sometimes provide a greater benefit than just one legacy tree. I'm not a huge fan of removing a legacy tree, but I think a lot of smaller trees, one-inch caterpillar, are easily dismissed because they're not significant. But smaller groves of trees, even if there isn't a lot of undergrowth, provide a lot of habitat for our birds and all of our pollinators. Also, to answer another question, there are plenty independent locally-owned businesses that would be available if anyone is interested. Come see me, I'd love to rent a space or at a very low cost to anybody who would like to have an event at my business. And I think perhaps reaching out to the Chamber of Commerce might be helpful, too. Just another note, the notification that was posted about tonight only talked about parking. I have a friend over on Academy Lane, and I asked her if she was coming, and she's, and I said, oh, they're talking about possible expansion and uses such as affordable housing cafes, and she said that the notification did not mention that, it was only about talking about parking. So maybe in the next notification it should be expanded as to what's really being discussed. And I just want to say I'm a huge library supporter. The East Milton Library, in fact, the children's room in the basement was named after my father and my grandmother because we supported the library. And one of the benefits that the town of Milton had when I was growing up is we actually had two neighborhood libraries, one in East Milton and one over on the Parkway. And I thought that really provided neighborhood services, and I think it's a little bit of a shame that we don't have that, and I understand that why the trustees wanted to sell it. But if we kept these neighborhood libraries, we would be servicing the neighbors who lived in it, and they would be walking, and the programming would be designed for those people in the neighborhood. So I'm an advocate of bringing programming. Again, if anybody wants to come to my business, I'd love to have kids. I'm also supportive of schools, my daughter is a teacher. So I'd love to have kids up where I am, so please do, Joe.
Jen, we're just going to let Val jump in.
Sorry, I can't address all of those things, but I'll address, first, the question about encouraging people to ride their bikes or use mass transit. I can't speak for the town, I don't know what is coming out of Town Hall about that or what is being said to Town Hall employees. I can say that a great deal of my staff lives outside of Milton, what would be outside of bike range, I would assume and guess. We did have some people who did take the bus from Quincy at one point, but I agree, a stronger mass transit infrastructure would benefit the town, not just the library. But right now, there's a lack of that. And as far as neighborhood library service, that's something that, we actually hired a consultant, could have been three years ago now, to do some survey analysis about neighborhood library services. Not that we would be able to bring back buildings of brick and mortar at this time, but we were looking into adding library kiosk stations. They're smaller, maybe the size of a bus stop are smaller, kiosk stations to see for book holds and pickups and things. This is something that they do a lot in rural library places throughout the country. And at that time, there wasn't, there wasn't a strong need or strong demand for that service, so we did not continue with that at the time. But this is something that we always talk about. We do an annual survey, patron survey for library users. And, you know, 10 years ago, branch services came up much more commonly than it does now. But that's why we try to do some outreach into the community. That's why we try to go to different preschools, and we try to go to the farmer's market, and we try to go to schools, because we realize, we try to bring, we try to bring the library where people are, but also to grab them and bring them in here and use all the services and collections we have, so, thank you.
Just a quick question, actually. Sorry. With 24 spots on Canton Ave., have you all discussed advertising those spots for, or are they often not being fully utilized? This was like, 24 spots is like half of what you get from a garage?
Absolutely. We bring that up at, especially at our children's programming, we bring it up periodically. We get a lot of pushback when we bring it up because people don't want to take their kids out on Canton Ave. That's the feedback we've gotten. But we do bring it up, especially with children's programming, because that's the largest turnout, the peak time. But as far as advertising otherwise, that's something we can consider.
I was at the gazebo concert last night with all kids, and tons of families were across the park in here, and so it doesn't seem like there's a family system in terms of gaining Canton Ave.
I think what we've heard is that people do use it, it's not their preference.
Before I sit down, I have a question, too, which is, as I said when I speak, I don't know what the mass transit situation is with this library, with the library. What is the mass transit situation? I've heard someone say passing, there was no mass transit? That sounds hard to believe. Can you tell me if there's, if the library and the people that are looking into this planning are in any way working to improve mass transit to the library and what this situation is?
You probably know that Milton doesn't have its own transit system. So there's a state transit system, and there's buses that run through Milton, and there's the trolley that's on the Elliott Street corridor, and we have commuter rail. Commuter rail doesn't take us here. There's a bus stop on Reed's Dale that takes you to Quincy Center, and it takes you to Ashmont, I believe. But it doesn't have many stops in Milton. So I don't know what it would take cost-wise to get a whole new system in Milton. It's too bad the trolley system that was here, that I heard was here historically, was removed. But recently, MBTA cut some of the bus service in a small way. Tim Zerwinski has that data. He provided that information to the planning board, I think, last year. So they haven't expanded their service in Milton.
I just wanted to say thank you again to Cheryl and Chris and all of you, because I know that there are a lot of competing interests, and it seems like you've really considered a lot of them. I know, for example, that one thing that we've been looking into in the town is somewhere where the kids can safely gather, and the youth task force has been doing that. I live in East Milton, they drink in the woods, I don't like it, I feel very bad that they don't have another place to go. When I was younger, I went to the library, that's where my parents kept me under control. I like the idea of maybe having a youth sort of area on top of the parking lot, that might work, I don't know. A lot of people have been talking about, my friend Eddie D'Amato and his wife recently had to close the plate again in East Milton, and Steel and Rye reopening on the 18th. But we don't have as many places on this side of town, and we don't have as many lunch spots, especially with the plate closing. And so to have maybe a cafe, I hear a lot of people complaining that, I refuse to admit that West Milton is a thing, but people that don't live in East Milton say that on the other side of town, there aren't really so many commercial opportunities, and people wish their work. So I think it's really interesting to me that you're considering some of these other sorts of discussion while you're talking about the library. Another thing I will say with respect to the Milton Art Center, you can live right there, there is no parking, there is no parking. We don't want more people driving in East Milton, please, so much traffic. Don't send them over to us, thank you.
Does anyone else want to speak, or?
A quick one.
All right, go ahead.
Just in reference to clearcutting, there are a lot of woods right there. You can do a double-decker parking lot, I mean, that's why we're here, for this library, so that our residents can be a part of this community. I don't see why you can't have trees around parking. You know, it doesn't have to be New York City and glaring at you, as Chris showed up here, or Cheryl, the great things that you can do to hide your parking, but that's what we need for our community. And the whole clearcutting idea is just beyond me because there's lots of woods there, and you can keep it. You know, how many parking spots are we talking about? And how many are in this lot?
58.
Well, that would be great, to have 120, because that's the future. That's the future, that's the town.
I just want to mention that this existing parking lot has 58 spaces. The library would like 50 to 60 to meet current and future need. This, oops. You can see the size of 58 spaces when you do it at one level, and then the blue here is approximate size of doing 60 spaces, 30 on two levels. So this is where the topography can, it actually impacts less trees by going vertical a bit with it. So as we said, it's a diagram, it's, there would need to be more due diligence done on its exact location and which trees, specific trees are there. There's, you can see in the location, it's set back from the street, I think it's 25 to 30 feet, which is adequate space for trees along the street, which is why I showed these kinds of images, that you won't necessarily be looking at headlights and bumpers and so forth along Canton Avenue, because you would actually have landscape, and you can have screening, and if you have structure, it can use natural materials. These are parking garages with other uses up there, but here with landscape, and I think it's not the typical image people have of a parking structure. So there are ways to do this so that it's not glaring, that it's a garage, and that can fit into the context.
I just have a quick clarifying question that you might be able to open with. Someone mentioned that this would be taken conservation land and clearcutting. This site that you're talking about, that's site A, that's not conservation land, is it?
No.
Okay. And the second thing was the historic site, that's the powder mill, right?
Yes.
That's not the original location where that was located. So it has been moved before, it has been relocated before with permission by the town. So are those major obstacles in terms of seeing some type of plan through, that this has already been moved before and it's not conservation land?
Do you want to talk about the powder house?
No, my last question is, if we're talking about smaller trees here, is there the possibility of actually improving the site that the gentleman mentioned is not in good repair? That we could actually improve the surrounding woods by incorporating a plan to have them maintained or added to as a part of this plan?
I will just say one thing that one of, you know, the trustees have asked, could the powder house be moved? Just when we were looking at this site at all, just, it hasn't been there permanently. It's been moved before, and I don't know how many people can actually see it from the street, but it might be a more appropriate place to put it on Town Hall or on the library property itself or whatever. Or I think in this design, Cheryl can speak to this, that the powder house is in the middle there, so it's still there right now, or, you know, the plans are to leave it there, I think. I mean, and these are, these are nothing definite, so, you know, as we say, you know, we're just exploring options, and we're here sharing with you what we have explored. We're not sharing with you what's been decided or anything, and we're looking for your input, and this is the very first, you know, opportunity that we've had to invite the public. I wish there was a lot more public, but we have reached out over and over to many people. And, you know, we want to continue to hear from you, and we want to continue to hear your ideas. You know, Meg, you spoke that that person didn't mention, we didn't mention affordable housing. We're not here to talk about that. The library is looking to solve our parking issues, and one of the potentials that was discussed was a possible garage, and there could be other uses. We are not proposing at this point any of those or not. We're just sharing what we've done so far, and we, you know, I just want to thank all of you for taking the time out to come and sharing your opinions. If you have any more comments you want to add, you can always, I think we'd like to email Will, he has a town email, add, you know, add questions, add comments, add your ideas to how we can solve this problem. I'm not sure the library is somebody that's going to look to solve the town's transit problems, that's way out of the scope of my job, unpaid job, I will say. And probably Will's job, too. I don't know about Cheryl's, but we really are happy that you came, and this is the first of many, and we would like to have more, and, you know, we really, just thank you so much for coming.